I call the September 11, 2019 Planning Commission for the City of Wilsonville to order at this time, 6 o'clock. Our clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Greenfield.
Here.
Vice Chair Posma.
Here.
Robert Heberlein.
Here.
Peter Hurley. Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Phyllis Mellon.
Here.
Simon Springall.
And.
Thank you.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a time we set aside for citizens to have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. We have no formal hearing scheduled. If any member of the audience would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand so that we may hear from you now. Point out that there will also be an opportunity during the presentation of the work session by the staff and consultants for the public to address the commission or to ask questions of the consultants. So you may want to defer until that time. Any other items would be welcome at this time. Reference on the location here? That's fine. Good. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Greenfield, Vice Chair Posma, and Commissioners. My name is Rich Truitt. I'm a resident of Wilsonville for the past eighteen and a half years. I'm here tonight representing the North Willamette Valley Habitat for Humanity. And our presence tonight is to offer our assistance in the subject at hand tonight, the matter of affordable housing in Wilsonville. Our affiliate has had success in partnering with other cities and developers in providing affordable housing in locations throughout the Willamette Valley. And we're interested in seeing if we might be able to be of some assistance here in Wilsonville. We recently dedicated our 28th home for a hardworking family of four in Mount Angel. And we'll begin construction this fall on four more units of housing in two different lots in Woodburn. North Willamette Valley Habitat runs two very successful restore operations. For those of you who may not be familiar, it's an operation that receives donations from citizens related to construction materials, furnishings for homes, things of that nature, and then sells it at a reduced price to folks who are interested in that type of activity. We run two of those successful operations, one in Canby and one in Woodburn. We have a strong donor base, and we have an incredible team of volunteers who do everything from assisting with office work to actually participating in the construction of the homes. Other volunteers participate at our restores on a volunteer basis. So with that said, we hope that Habitat for Humanity can be a partner and play at least a small role in the very large challenge of affordable housing, increasing affordable housing here in Wilsonville. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak at this time?
Mr. Truitt, did you submit a speaker card?
Yeah, we have it here. I have it. And we move on to a consideration of last month's minutes for August 14. Are there any corrections or additions to be made to those minutes?
I have a clarification. On page four of eight of the minutes, at the bottom of the page, five bullets up, it's been recorded that I was talking about habitat functions of open space. And then that last sentence just doesn't flow. And the more I thought about it, the more it occurred to me that I may have not been clear in what I was trying to say. So here it goes, is my recreation of history. If we are mixing SROZ areas with recreational open space areas and parks, then a deeper discussion is needed about the various design functions of open space. I think that would be a better reflection of what I was trying to say. We, if you recall, we had landscape architects that were going to work on these open spaces. And the point I was making is that the landscape architect, without having some design goals and objectives, is just going to come up with what the developer wants them to do. If we are going to have information about acreage of open space, I was suggesting that perhaps functions of that we're trying to achieve in various combinations of open space would help a landscape architect. And I brought an example of my own backyard with wetlands and a trail and so forth. So that is...
So again...
I can reread it if you want.
Yeah, the exact wording that you'd like it to reflect.
The last sentence is going to be replaced with this. If we are mixing SROZ areas with recreational open space areas and parks, then a deeper discussion is needed about the various design functions of open space.
I think that reflects the intent of the discussion as I understood it much more closely than that sentence that's written in the minutes.
Anything else? Hearing none?
Well, we're gonna need a motion on that one since there's a clarification. So I would move that we adopt the minutes with the clarification as read into the record by Commissioner Mesba.
I'll second.
And move and second it that the minutes for the August 14 meeting with the correction or clarification offered by Commissioner Mesba be accepted. The discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
For the sake of clarity, I think Commissioner Heberlein is abstaining.
Oh, okay. Then the motion passes five to... Aye to one abstain?
No, two.
Two abstentions.
I was not here either.
Okay. And we're carrying it. Correction, then. Passes...
I think it would actually be better for us to have somebody else second the motion since...
I'll second the motion.
Very good. Thank you.
And so if we could do a revote.
Revote.
Those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion pass those abstaining?
Aye.
I should have asked first whether anyone objected. The motion passes for yes and to abstain. Then move on to our main business of the night, which is a work session on equitable housing strategic plan. And will you present our staff?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair Greenfield. So we're here to continue a discussion on the equitable housing strategic plan. As you may recall, back in June, this board was introduced to this project. And now staff and the consultant have been working hard, doing a lot of work this summer, working with a task force as well as stakeholders and doing other outreach, as well as a lot of technical work on this project. So they have a lot more additional information to share with the commission tonight. So presenting tonight, first of all, from Echo Northwest, is Lorelei Juntanen. And she is a partner and project director at Echo Northwest specializing in the valuation between public investment and community development. She's worked extensively on housing throughout the state and region and is really an expert in this field. And then Kim Rivald, senior planner, who is, I've observed, working very hard on this project and so, and been doing a great job. So I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Greenfield and Commissioners. I'm going to very quickly walk through our intent and what we hope to get from you and present to you tonight. And then I will turn it over to Lorelei for the bulk of the presentation, as well as some feedback exercises that we would like to do with you later on. But first, we're going to talk briefly about just some feedback that we got, both from our market research report that we conducted earlier this summer, as well as provide you with an update on the stakeholder engagement work we've been doing to date. The bulk of the presentation is going to talk about some potential implementation actions that the city could consider taking, including within the strategic plan. And then we hope to get some initial feedback from you about these actions, particularly as it relates to actions that involve building focused tools, which I think is probably what the Planning Commission here is most interested in. So with that, just to point out that within your packet this evening, you have a copy of the market research report that was done. We're not going to walk through that in detail, but we'll have some opportunities to answer any questions you have about that report. As well, we have a summary document of just some general themes we've been hearing from the stakeholder engagement thus far. And then lastly, there is a menu of some potential implementation actions. We'll talk a little more about what those are and also provide you with some feedback from the task force and their initial evaluation of these. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lorelei to give you a little more information.
Chair Greenfield and Commissioners, thank you for having us here tonight. And I do want to just take a moment to applaud the city for wading into this complicated and fairly difficult conversation and for the commitment to action that's implied just by even opening up the project. So I know you all are aware of the degree to which housing affordability and availability is a major issue around the state. A couple of sort of definitional and grounding pieces before we jump into the meat of the presentation. The first is a reminder of what we mean when we use the words equitable housing. It does go beyond affordability and is a fairly encompassing definition. The words that you see here on the screen are drawn from Metro's equitable housing strategy and really represent the framework that most communities around the region and the state are using for thinking about provision of housing. So diverse, meaning it's a range of unit types and prices, high quality, physically accessible, reasonably priced, and then paying attention to those locational pieces of proximity to amenities and transit. The purpose of this project ultimately is to identify and prioritize a set of actions, strategic solutions, that the city can implement in the near term to address housing gaps. To get there, we have to understand housing gaps. And those come in a couple of different shapes and flavors. We included a market research report in the packet that looks at the housing from a market perspective and identifies gaps from that direction. But we've also been doing a substantial amount of public outreach and community engagement with stakeholders to help to identify gaps in service needs from the perspective of the people who are trying to access housing in the community. And a quick reminder of the policy objectives, what we are trying to achieve as a result of this work. There are a lot of words on the screen. I will save you all the boredom of reading through them word by word, but we'll emphasize a couple of points. The first is a focus on diversity of housing types. That's in response to the metro definition of equitable housing. An intentional focus on homeownership. And then some intentional focus on thinking about opportunities physically located close to transit. More included in there, you can look at those on the screen, but just to highlight a couple of points. Before jumping into the market report, I'll turn it back to you since you've been more engaged with the stakeholders.
All right. So as to date, we've done a mixture of interviews directly with some key stakeholders, and the bulk of those interviews have been conducted by our consultant team. We've also put together a few focus groups representing some different areas of need relative to housing. I've been present at all of those focus groups, which we've held throughout July and August, both with some local nonprofit service providers in the area, employers and higher education in Wilsonville, and then nonprofit affordable housing developers. And that was to ask a more targeted series of questions relative to those areas to try to get a more nuanced understanding of need that goes beyond what you can glean from a market research report. We've also had a couple of task force meetings. Commissioner Mesba has been an active participant in both of those as a representative of the Planning Commission. And at these meetings, we've put together a task force that has a lot of perspectives, both from a nonprofit service oriented side as well as from a development side. And we really look to use the group as an exchange of ideas from different perspectives. So we've had a couple of meetings with the task force, and we'll get in a little more detail later on about what we've heard from the task force, particularly as it relates to some of those potential implementation strategies. Lastly, you've probably seen, at least I hope you've seen, through the city's new online engagement platform, Let's Talk Wilsonville. We've had a housing survey running on the equitable housing page that's on Let's Talk Wilsonville. That survey is open through Sunday. So we're not going to get into the survey now as we really haven't had a chance to digest that survey input, but we do hope to take a look at that once it's complete, and we'll share those results with you as well. Subsequent to this, I think we're going to be looking at if there's any groups or populations that we're missing. I think we have a sense that we maybe haven't heard as much from the renter perspective, and we might seek to dig a little more into that. But with that, just, I want to pull out a couple of themes that came from our work so far. In terms of talking with for-profit developers to try to understand housing development and kind of what helps them make all those pieces work together, the main points are that there's obviously a gap that happens sometimes. And, you know, from a developer perspective, they have a bottom line they have to meet, and that dictates some of the decisions they make when it comes to providing housing. Often, there are gaps in terms of meeting that feasibility, kind of making that bottom line work out. And there's generally a sense that there's some flexibility in how communities might work to fill those gaps, whether or not that be, particularly when it comes to more affordable types of housing, free or discounted land, tax abatements, SDC waivers or reductions. Those are all different options that I think, and we heard that from nonprofit affordable housing developers as well, that could be on the table. There is a perception that some regulations can be a bit onerous, particularly from a cost standpoint. Stormwater requirements were one that was cited. SDCs, although it's noted that our SDCs are generally comparable to other SDCs locally. So, you know, certainly that's something that comes at a cost to a developer and is something they have to factor in when planning housing. Infill developers tend to look for areas with good transit and existing services, as well as retail. So particularly with future planning activities and opportunities in the town center, that might be something that's attractive. There is a perception that there is not a lot of buildable land. You know, perception's not necessarily reality in that regard, but that does, has come up as what maybe has kept certain developers out of the Wilsonville area is that they don't necessarily understand the opportunities that we have here. One last thing that was noted is that particularly for smaller infill projects, it adds a lot more risk to have to go through a discretionary type of review. And so if there is a more clear and objective path to get projects of that nature done, that is something that developers would certainly be supportive of. Moving on to the focus groups that we held, like I said, we had three different focus groups. There were a number of different conversations and ideas that were exchanged, but in particular, I wanted to highlight a couple that jumped out at me. When it came to talking to local service providers, one of the things that's unique, and we found this in our market research as well, is that we have, particularly when it comes to rental housing, we have a newer housing stock. So we don't often run into the same tenant landlord issues that you might have in other communities that are starting to see the age of some of their buildings show. So on one hand, that's a good thing because residents generally don't have many complaints about the quality of their housing. That often also correlates to more expensive housing. So it's kind of a double edged sword there. It was noted that of people who are in need, it's really single parents, working adults who are single, seniors on fixed incomes, and people with disabilities that might need the most help in finding and obtaining and staying in affordable housing. There's also a concern about the impact that HOA fees and property taxes that continue to rise have, particularly for populations that have fixed incomes. And it was noted that, you know, we don't really have, we do have a homeless population here in Wilsonville, but there aren't any services that help address the needs directly of the homeless community, and that is seen as a challenge. The conversation we had with employers and higher education was really interesting because we talked a little bit about housing costs, particularly when people relocate here from other areas and how people often experience sticker shock when it comes to coming from somewhere else, like say Utah. That was one example that was given. It was also challenging for some employers to find temporary housing for people coming in from outside of the area. And, you know, the rental market is pretty tight as it is, so to find something that's inexpensive where somebody can stay for a few months is a bit of a struggle. Transportation, there's really this intersection between transportation and housing. And in particular, for many of the employers who have more of a low to middle wage job structure here, most of their employees are not living here. And so they're commuting, and, you know, traffic becomes problematic. Transit service is something that's really important. And so this is a bigger challenge because these populations aren't necessarily able to find the housing they need closer to their job. There was support among the group for additional workforce and affordable housing for students and looking at ways we might be able to foster these opportunities. But one thing employers noted is that, you know, while housing assistance from an employer paid perspective sounds great, they're putting all of their financial capacity into paying wages. And so they don't see a way for them to be able to offer anything else in terms of, you know, home buyer assistance or anything like that. We heard some similar themes from the nonprofit housing developers that we did from the for-profits, particularly in, you know, being able to, in order to be able to achieve lower affordable type homeowner and rental projects, that there is some kind of subsidy needed. SDC waivers and land, both were mentioned as things that might help fill in those gaps that the city could take a proactive role in. They really emphasized the importance of having city support and advocacy and having, you know, almost a champion in the city to get housing projects of this nature built and located here. It was noted that we have a really positive history of working with the housing, affordable housing developers in the past. So that's already a leg up that we have in other communities is that we're seen as a great community to come in and that we're supportive of providing affordable housing, which is good. Both the metro bond, as well as looking at potential transit oriented development opportunities near our west station, we're seeing as some near term opportunities that the city could have to maybe further our affordable housing goals. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Lorelei for some initial implications from all of the work we've done so far.
Thank you. Getting closer to the point where we get to have a discussion about action, but a little bit more to go through first. The market analysis that we did really highlighted three groups that are going to be increasingly important to the housing landscape in Wilsonville. These are obviously people who are already here, but projections and expected changes in demographics mean that the housing supply will need to be doing more to cater to the needs of these groups going forward. So the first is our friends, the millennials, are growing up and moving into a phase of life where they are much more likely to be interested in homeownership. And research here and across the country supports the change in preference for, yes, homeownership, yes, single family, but relatively affordable, and in particular, located near amenities and close to transit. Baby boomers, similar trends to what you have been experiencing are going to continue increasing, a slow increase in the number of people who are in that age group. Those are people who are downsizing, who may be interested in aging in place and/or multi-generational households, and also want homes that are close to service and transit, though maybe for different reasons. And then last but not least, an increasing share of Latinx households. Long story short, all three of these groups are likely to be interested in units that are more affordable, but the unit characteristics that they would be looking for would be slightly different. Single family attached and multifamily are continued, are more likely to be appealing to those folks, in particular because they're less expensive and easier to maintain. And when we start to think about what the gaps might look like, pulling together the results of the stakeholder engagement and the detailed market research that we have done, we note a couple of key takeaways and then start to transition to thinking about, okay, what are we going to do about it? The first is that Wilsonville is going to need more than just housing production. Obviously, you have a growing population, and so you do need to add new units. But in addition to that, we need to make sure that we're connecting people to the right kind of units and that that supply matches the characteristics that are likely to be demanded. So that means we need things like programs for homeownership, which is an important emphasis that we heard through the stakeholder engagement. And it also means tenant education and advocacy will be critical. We also find that your current housing mix will continue to serve the community well in the future. And the reason that I say that is that Wilsonville has a relatively high proportion of multifamily units and single family attached units already compared to other parts of the region. So the goal should be to maintain that mix going forward and to make sure that new development that happens in the town center, Frog Pond, other new areas, and infill development continues to add to the stock of both single family as well as those higher density housing types. We expect that there will be increasing need for units at the lowest end of the income spectrum. The market does not generally provide those kinds of units on its own. That is a place where subsidy is needed and specific direct action on the part of public sector is needed to help to make sure that that can happen. And that action can look like partnerships, land, resources, funding. And that is the most important. Last point is that funding has to be part of the package that housing supply, it does not just magically appear. And in particular, housing supply at the lowest end of the income spectrum needs dollars to go along with the implementation to make it happen. So putting that together into something that looks like a framework for action, so starting to think about how are we going to organize the kinds of things that the city might do. Two broad categories, things that are oriented toward... Two broad categories, things that are oriented toward people and things that are oriented toward buildings. And the slide that you see up on the screen here takes the policy objectives that you saw in an earlier slide and slots them in underneath each of those categories to help to show the kinds of ways that we can make sure we're achieving the policy objectives while also being broad brush and making sure that we're sort of hitting on all of the different parts of a strategy. So it's going to include programs and partnerships that help people stay in their units, to preserve existing units, and incentives to fund new, as well as programs to make sure that people are connected to new homes that are available. Our intention for this conversation tonight, as Kim suggested, is to focus the conversation on the building side of the equation, given that you all are the Planning Commission and tend to live in that built environment. That's not to say that the other side of the equation is off the table for discussion tonight, but the place where there's the most opportunity for you all to provide input is on the building focused side. Let me go, whoops. Can I go back? One more back. There we go. And so I just want to, before we go into a second opportunity for public comment related to what, related specifically to this topic, when we think about building focused tools, it's easy to sort of categorize them into groups, and that's what's showing here. So these are programs to fund or reduce the cost, so just straight up provide cash to help to build more units, property tax abatement programs, development and permitting incentives, and then things related to ownership and sale requirements to make sure that units that are currently affordable but might be market rate, might be in the market as opposed to subsidized and rent restricted, that they maintain that way and that you have the opportunity to intervene and acquire them if necessary. And then tools that require affordability, either in new construction or otherwise. And the actions are going to be roughly divided into those five categories when we get into that discussion.
So at this time, I know we had one speaker earlier. I think if there's any questions from the audience about this information or any further comments, this might be a good time for the commission to hear that.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak? I think we can go ahead.
Okay. So I think maybe before we get into some of the feedback that we heard from the implementation actions, this might also be a good pause point, just to make sure if there are any questions from you all on both any of the stakeholder engagement themes that we heard as well as any of the market research, any items in the report.
I have a question for you. And it's maybe something that I just continue to struggle with. I guess I heard an indication that the mindset should be that each of the developments that we're looking at, including town center and Frog Pond, should have a mix that may include multifamily. And I'll tell you where my concern lies, and that is that, one, we've had a lot of pushback from our citizenry about density and potentially with regard to multifamily in the Frog Pond area. And I understand it. I live in that direction. And my concern is that having higher density and multifamily on the periphery of our city and away from services is just increasing our traffic flow. I for one frequent, what's the crazy intersection of 65th and Stafford? And it's always been a nightmare, and it's becoming drastically more so. And as we increase the density there, we're only increasing that problem. So I guess I'm curious if what we should be looking for is that each of our individual projects need to be looking for that balance and including multifamily, or if it really is something of an offset. I mean, we mentioned town center, and it seems to me that's probably a more appropriate place for multifamily and density because it's closer to services, it doesn't congest our roads and the like. And what are we saying there? Are we really saying that each of the individual project areas that we're looking at need to be considering multifamily or non?
So I think you hit a good point there, that the town center plan, when we adopted it, you know, envisions this as being more of an active mixed use type of community and that really, you wouldn't necessarily envision a single family house in the middle of that. So it's logical to think that that probably will be the city's primary, maybe not only, but primary area of multifamily growth in the future. I think Frog Pond provides an opportunity, and our concept plan for that, particularly east and south, lines up for this in having maybe not so much of the intense higher density multifamily, when you think of an apartment or a condo type building, but provides opportunities for things like cottage clusters or attached single family or ADUs, something that isn't going to be uncharacteristic of the other densities that are in that area, but still provides a good mix of housing type. And so I think that's sort of what's envisioned, but collectively, when you combine those two features and those two areas of growth, it still helps you to keep that same mix of housing type.
Okay.
I would add, as we look down the road at, we're going to have a robust work program around Hospital 2001 as well as the master planning for Frog Pond East and South, which that urban growth expansion has some conditions related to housing mix. So certainly, there'll be a robust discussion as we work through that very issue on that project.
Yeah. And I understand that, and I think that's why I bring that up, because to the extent that we can offset on projects versus it has to be on specific projects, I think we need to be thinking in that regard, because I think density on our periphery, we need to be careful with it. Let me give you the second thing that I'm struggling with as well. Maybe it's something for future discussion, but I continue to struggle with this notion of, we're still fighting against the market. And a lot of the things that we're talking about are, especially when we're talking about homeownership programs and affordability of ownership and the like, we're still stuck with the market. And I don't know the solution to that. I guess I thought that when we were embarking on this project, we'd be focusing more on trying to find affordable solutions. And I understand it all comes together, but I'm still struggling with this notion of we seem to be talking about a lot of things other than can we provide some sort of subsidization or encourage the development of projects that will allow low income housing tax credits, other types of programs, so we can make just plain affordable housing rather than tiers of going up on homeownership and the like. Because I think the more we talk about ownership, the more we could keep talking about the market. And maybe we need to, and maybe I need the economics discussion to understand why it is that we have to have that discussion. I just thought we'd be focusing a little bit more on how do we just plain make affordable units that won't have the same sort of market pull that is creating for expensive housing all over the Portland metro area, not just in Wilsonville.
Well, I can respond to that preliminarily. And I'll start by saying we're only at the very beginning phases of talking about what specific actions will be prioritized, and that's the main focus of the remainder of this discussion. And certainly, among the tools that are included in the packet are tools that are intended to subsidize and incent the construction of capital A affordable housing, so that would be rent restricted regulated units. And certainly, the market analysis and housing needs analysis and any analysis that anyone has done since the end of the recession support the need for building more housing that's affordable to those at the lowest end of the income spectrum. So that's definitely part of the equation. Metro's definition and the one that's been used for this project of equitable housing is more encompassing than just looking at rent restricted affordable units and really talks about creating opportunities and housing choice for people at all housing price points. And single family and homeownership product are part of the spectrum of need for people who live in the city of Wilsonville. And we did hear through stakeholder outreach that that was part of what they were, part of the challenge that people are facing is the ability to get into a homeownership product, which is the primary mechanism by which people can build wealth in our society. So I don't think we've precluded, I think all the paths are open at this point. And we've heard need all up and down the income spectrum for support getting into housing.
I'm hoping you can help me understand a little bit more, when you talk about the building focused strategies, potential, is affordability requirements? Could you tell me a little bit more, exactly what are you referring to in that? I'm not sure I've got a picture of that yet.
Yeah, I can definitely do that. And I will also say that we'll have more time to talk about the specifics of these. In your packet is a list of the specific tools that fall under each of those high level categories. And for affordability requirements, our toolkit is very limited. Really, what we're talking about there is inclusionary zoning. So what we mean when we say affordability requirement is that if you're going to build units, some or all of them must be affordable and that you just require it. And the only tool available to us in the state of Oregon is inclusionary zoning, and that applies only in a narrow subset of projects.
Thank you.
Yeah. So under each of those on that slide, there are a set of tools that fall under them.
I'll jump in. So I got a specific question. On page 22, exhibit 29 shows the forecast of demand for new dwelling units from 2019 to 2039, and essentially mirrors the fact, mirrors the statement that we essentially have right now or are very close to it, that we have about a 50/50 distribution of single family detached versus single family attached slash multifamily. If Wilsonville had a different housing mix as is right now, would this look different? Is this being influenced by our current housing distribution? Or is this truly a blind snapshot that is looking at what hypothetically would the residents of Wilsonville need based on the demographics that we expect to have in that timeframe?
Yeah, it's a combination of those things. I mean, the trends in the past plus looking ahead at the demographics of the future.
Okay.
And much of that demand forecast was generated from the Clackamas County Housing Needs Analysis, which will be on the agenda later as an info item. But since those processes were going on simultaneously, much of some of that baseline forecasting data was pulled from that. And there are some assumptions that go into that as well, based on metro forecasting and state planning requirements too. So it's a little bit of everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
May I? Sorry. So since we're on the subject of the, what is this document called? The market research report, there was lots of comparison, there was quite an interesting, I can't find it now, comparison with other areas of Clackamas County, comparing the housing type mix. And just, it occurred to me when I was looking at this, it showed, sorry, I'll find it in just a second.
I'm guessing it's page nine.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't go back that far. It's not.
It was a wrong guess.
Yeah, no, it's.
Hey, Simon, how about page five?
Has a list of cities, Clackamas County cities.
Yeah, take a look at page five, Simon. I'm guessing that's what it is.
I need to go back even further. Thank you. That's it. Bingo. So page five shows, demonstrates, compared to all other major cities and I guess many minor cities in Clackamas County, the housing is very, the housing mix is very different, I guess is what we know, and there's probably good reasons for that. But what it doesn't include is our neighbors in Washington County, particularly are interested in Toiles and King City, Tigerd, because I suspect that we're more similar to some of those cities because of our proximity to the transportation hubs, proximity to 99 and, I mean, to I-5 and 99 West. So we obviously are an outlier, but I think it's all transportation related and location related because the reason for Wilsonville's growth is largely because of our location on the I-5 and the ability for people to work here and live here. These things are all connected. It was, however, it is very interesting that out of all these other cities in Clackamas County, we have that mix. The other thing I wanted to say was that, the other thing I wanted to say has disappeared from my head, so I'm not going to say it.
I was having similar problems finding what I was looking for, but I have. On page 15 of the appendix A, the report says about 37% of Wilsonville's future households will have income below 50% of Clackamas County's median family income, and about 23% will have incomes between 50% and 120% of the county's MFI. That's, those are astonishing figure, the first of those is astonishing figure. 50% of Clackamas County's median family income, below 50% of Clackamas County's median family income, in other words, under $40,000. How is this estimate arrived at?
So you're referring to exhibit 10, correct? On page 15 of the appendix A?
Page 15 at the top, yes.
So this was work that was done as a part of that Housing Needs Analysis project for Clackamas County, and the percentages and the assumption of household growth is actually derived from current percentages of the different income ranges. So the extremely low income, very low income and low income, it's essentially applying the future growth to the current distribution, and that's how they derived that. So there's a little footnote there that says that it's based on that existing distribution. And so that's how that was derived for that.
Excuse me, that is a percentage that we now have?
So I think the ratios, the percentages are the same, it's just a matter of how the changes in household will affect those different income tiers.
How are those people living in Wilsonville on less than $40,000?
So there's an interesting, that's a good question. I don't know that it's in this appendix, but in the larger Housing Needs Analysis, oh, there might be an exhibit somewhere in here actually, but one of the things that's noted is that what ends up happening is you have families in those tiers that end up, it's what we call cost burdened or severely cost burden, and maybe if you can find that exhibit. But essentially, the thought is that because you're in a certain income tier, you assume that 30%, 30% is kind of that cutoff of what you should be spending of your income on housing. And what ends up happening is that you have families that have to overextend themselves to get into housing. And so it has this kind of trickle up effect almost where then, you know, each subsequent group, you know, they're kind of overreaching, and so we have certain percentages that end up being cost burdened because they have to pay more than what they really can afford theoretically in their housing range. And I think Laura Ly found it in a good exhibit.
Yeah, it's on page 16. There's a graphic that describes the, it imagines if all of Wilsonville's households were 100 residents, 56 of them would be renters, 44 of them would be homeowners. Of the renters, 28 of the renters would earn less than $50,000 per year, and nearly all of them are cost burden, meaning they're spending more than 30% of their take home pay on housing. So that's how they're making it work. They're spending. So that's how they're making it work, they're spending more than they should be spending or really have the financial capacity to spend on housing and they're scrimping on everything else. And some of them at the very lowest end may have access to government programs to help them, but many of them may not.
Can we assume that at least that figure of 50%, that is, 37% includes a good number of people who are receiving housing subsidy of some sort?
Federal subsidies are few and far between and we don't have a local housing voucher program in the state or in the Portland metro area. So the units themselves may be subsidized, meaning that the rent is lower than it would be if it were available on the market, which would help, and they may income qualify for that. But I think you've put your finger on exactly the challenge that we're trying to solve and the reason that we're having this conversation for a good portion of the residents of the city of Wilsonville affording housing is a very difficult challenge.
It's a very sunny meeting.
Yeah.
So.
We're going to talk about doing something to fix it in a minute, everyone, we can get there.
That's good, I'm looking forward to it. So tying in with Mr. Springall's comments regarding exhibit nine and the, and the fact that Wilsonville straddles both Clackamas and Washington County, would there be a way to make this data a little more inclusive of the communities in Washington County as well to get a better understanding of how we compare to our peers near us?
Sure, yeah, that certainly is possible.
I mean, I think, because it's census data, so if you can look into, we could maybe pull together a list and share it with you to see, you know, I think that the point about the comparably located communities relative to transportation facilities, that might be interesting to see how that mixes, because it probably will be a little different than what we see in Clackamas.
Yeah, I mean, look.
It may not be though. I mean, it would be interesting to see.
Really talking about Toilton and Tigard.
And King City.
And Sherwood.
Sherwood, I guess I missed off, yeah.
Not quite transportation-wise, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess some of what I'm looking at is when you look at exhibit nine and this, I would say would probably closely mirror the distribution of detached, single-family versus multifamily or attached, single-family in terms of the percentages, you know, and then if you look at what the market analysis says that Wilsonville needs, I guess I would be curious, you know, what does the, what does the metro area as a whole say that the region needs in terms of distribution between single-family and attached? And is it that, I hate to say it, that Wilsonville is doing their share and the rest of the communities maybe aren't?
I'm not sure that I would frame it as doing your share, but I do think that if the whole region looked more like Wilsonville, it would be less of a challenge and that's why the implication that we pulled forward is to continue to maintain the mix that you've got today. If you were River Grove, this would be a very different conversation.
Yeah, and I guess that's maybe a fundamental issue that we have as a region is you have pockets of people, communities that are more responsive to the needs of the entire population.
Correct.
Would it be a misperception to think that Metro is looking at Wilsonville as an easy target here?
I don't pretend to know what Metro would think looking at Wilsonville's housing mix.
I get altogether a very strong hint through these materials that Wilson, that Metro's influence is pretty strong in pushing toward, well, pushing toward our goals of inclusion and providing for the low end of the income scale. But Wilsonville is already doing, as Mr. Heberline suggests, so much better than our neighbors in this regard. It seems that equitability, if you, if I can use that term, I don't know if it's a real word.
Equity.
Equity, that in real estate means something else, but let's use it here, equity. Regionally would seem to require that other communities bear a larger burden to, going forward to address this imbalance in our region and that Wilsonville, if not having done its share, has done the right thing to get where we are today. So I'm curious about whether there is any systemic pressure on the other communities to come up.
Ah, I see where you're going. Yeah, so first of all, I do think it's fair for you all to pat yourselves on the back a little bit on this front, that doesn't alleviate the need by any stretch of the imagination, especially if you look at the graphic that we were just looking at regarding cost burdening. I think this conversation has really highlighted the fact that there's still need here. But in terms of sharing the burden, I think that you all are probably going to be having a pretty robust conversation about House Bill 2001. Other communities will be having an even more robust conversation about HB 2001. And then there's also House Bill 2003, which I don't know if you all have been tracking, that's looking at a methodology for determining regional housing need and potentially even applying targets to local communities. These are just brand-new, out of the legislature at the state, not sure how they're going to hit the ground yet, but there are other people who are asking the same question that you are about how to make sure that all communities are doing their part and they're taking action on it at the legislature. I don't know if that is, makes you happy or sad, but that's the truth of what's going on.
Well, neither, actually. The issue is more than just patting ourselves on the back, the issue is a practicable one. If Wilsonville continues to provide affordable housing and nobody else does, this becomes where everybody who needs affordable housing will end up and we aren't big enough to be able to satisfy the region's need. So we can't be that far ahead of the rest of the crowd because it becomes, gravity will pull the need here. This is not going to be practicable. And I don't know the figures that we were talking about, the 37% of future households are going to be below 50% of the county median income. That is, to me, a forecast, future household forecast. And one of the solutions is, and some cities do this, is to make it difficult for them to stay in the city and find other places to live or end up being homeless. It all depends on whether or not regionally we are having this inclusive idea and we all push in that direction, effectively, uniquely though for our situation, understood, but effectively collectively. If not, that becomes the lowest common denominator, is that everybody says, hey, we've done our share, not in our city anymore. And I've been in metro areas where that has been an issue, only that it was reversed in my experience. The big city had all the affordable housing and all the surrounding communities for the most part, said, you know, if you need affordable housing, go to Madison. And it became a bone of contention and it became divisive. So that's what I meant by a practicable element here.
Yeah, and I do think that Metro is aware of that dynamic and is moving in the direction of having a more inclusive community conversation and that is an intentional part of their decision to move forward with talking about equitable housing and with funding studies like these. And I also think that the state legislature is paying attention to exactly this kind of an issue. And the fact remains that there's need here today. Before we even start to think about what the future could look like, there are people who live in Wilsonville right now, today, who are struggling with this, who are your neighbors and your residents and your employees, as we heard pretty clearly through the stakeholder outreach with the employers here in the city, who are struggling and who do need support. So it's fantastic that you're moving into this conversation.
That was exactly the point I was wanting to interject is that if employees of businesses in Wilsonville can't afford to live here, they're adding to the traffic, they're adding, they're commuting out, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's a simple story and it's pretty clear that people have to move, you know, further south of the river and or elsewhere outside of the city area and they're then relying on, you know, either driving or, which adding to transportation costs or they're relying on transit. And transit is pretty limited out here despite SMART. So I think, I think there is this clearly need for, in Wilsonville, for continuing to provide a variety of housing. And I'm not talking about big A affordable housing, I'm talking about providing, continuing to provide that variety of housing. And I do agree that density makes most sense in the town center, especially for, you know, multifamily and, I mean, for apartment-style mixed use. The town center, we talked about that, that whole benefit of work, work-live and having access to the services and none of that necessarily requires getting in a car and driving down the road, whereas obviously if you do live in the outlying areas, even Villwire, there's not a lot of services there and so they need to get on the road. So those are issues until we have a much more comprehensive public transit system and much more mixed use throughout the city, we're going to need to have a whole variety of housing, but focused, the more dense housing in the center.
Sure, but my continued issue with it is that, and I think this is what I had mentioned before where I still struggle, we can't fix the market by ourselves. And what's going to happen is if we have too much of a focus on we need all these housing, you know, if we're going to try to fix the market for affordable home ownership, we can't do it. I understand what you were saying about we have people who are working in Wilsonville who can't live here, but if we set the market artificially low, I can assure you, we're not going to be attracting just Wilsonville employees. All we're doing is just attracting people who work elsewhere to come here because we're the most affordable place around and then lo and behold, we're going to fill it and guess what, the market's just going to jump right back up again. We can't fix that on our own. What we can do on our own is try to find mechanisms, and I know we're getting there in this discussion, which is why in my mind it's drastically more important to have discussions about big A affordable units because that solves the dilemma we're talking about right now, which is people just plain can't afford to live here and we want to create an environment where more people who are employed in Wilsonville can actually afford housing in Wilsonville. Because if we're not focused on that, my concern is just straight economics 101 says we're just adding to, we're not changing the market rate and we're just adding to the problems. I would like to make for this project to result in a way that we can get people who can't afford to live here and work here to find a mechanism to do that. And I just, I'm skeptical that focusing on homeownership-type approaches really gets us there. That's my point. Simply because we can't, we can't be the market all by ourselves because we create the problems that we were just talking about.
Okay, I hear a lot of appetite to start talking about tools, so can we do that?
Yes.
Can we transition?
All right.
Fantastic. So what, and we're going to delay a little bit, just to give you a quick overview of the discussion that we had last week at the task force meeting. Commissioner, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, Mespa, participated in that and can correct me if I go wrong in the summary in any way, but we set this up as an opportunity for the task force to provide you all some input in this meeting before you jump into a very similar activity to help us to identify a set of tools that seem like they make the most sense in Wilsonville. So the way that we set that up with the task force is we gave them the same list that was included in your packet of potential tools. We gave them some dots, they were green, blue and red. The green dots were for tools that were the easiest to use in the near term or to implement in the near term. The blue dots were for the tools that were the most effective, that moved the needle the most. And the red dots were a veto kind of dot for noting tools that should probably be dropped. The purpose of this exercise was to give a quick look to help to inform where more research is needed and where more discussion is needed and where tools feel like they have the best nexus with the specific problems in the city of Wilsonville. It's not meant to be scientific or exact in any way, but it was meant to provide you all some feedback before you jump into a similar set of activities. I'd like to walk through the results of the task force meeting and I will say right off the bat that they were kind of all over the place and a little difficult to summarize, so I'll do my best. But before I do that, does anyone have any questions about any of the individual tools? Not commentary about whether you like them or don't like them, but questions about what they mean or how they might be applied?
What's the color coding?
Green is easiest, blue is most effective and red is drop it, shouldn't be talking about this. No? Okay.
The, you asked whether there are questions. The exercise lacks enough information to allow people to judge how each of these tools can be used uniquely in Wilsonville. Therefore, people are telling you their opinion about stuff they know nothing about. So, you know, that's probably why they're all over the place. They're making assumptions that are probably not correct for Wilsonville.
I think part of the purpose of the exercise was to, it's too long of a list, was to start the conversation and to help to understand where there is need for more discussion and more research and more clarification and where there's clear understanding on the fact that it should be dropped. So that is still the place where we are in this conversation. And I heard pretty robust conversations as I was walking around the small groups and some questions that were really informed and thoughtful. So let me try to give an overview and then you can add in from your perspective. And we have other task force members back here as well. So the most emphasis in the conversations and in the dot placement was on building focus tools and in particular focus on renters. And then just quickly so that we don't forget about the whole other side of the spectrum that are related to people and connecting people to resources, we did see a fair amount of alignment around supporting renters, though questions around whether, in the discussion, heard questions around whether that should be a city role or whether that was really more of a county role or whether there were nonprofits that do it. But helping tenants to understand what their rights are and how, what they can do in situations where they feel like their rights are being, not being respected. And then there, as it relates to homeownership, down payment assistance was one of the tools that seemed like it made the most sense. So on the programs designed to reduce cost, so this category of tools are programs that are designed to make it easier and faster to build more housing. And it's not necessarily capital A affordable housing because remember, we have an inclusive definition of housing, but in some cases it is. And at the top of the slide, there are tools listed that were, people had more interest in and at the bottom, less interest. And I have bolded all of those tools that had at least seven blue or green dots. So the ones that really are coming to the top are these top three here, reduced waived permit fees or SDCs for affordable housing. So that is a direct reduction in the operating, the upfront cost of building a unit if it is capital A affordable unit. Some interest in trying to explore what might be done with the SMART property and redeveloping that. And then interest in fast-tracking permit review for particular housing types or for affordable housing. So that might be missing middle housing types, that might be accessory dwelling units, it might be only for capital A affordable. Okay. On property tax abatement programs, this one is an interesting one because there are ... are many flavors of tax abatement programs. In general, people thought tax abatement programs were a great idea. Um, and the reason for that is that it reduces the ongoing operating costs for multifamily capital A affordable and also helps to make it easier to develop new, uh, new housing of any type. Um, you in the city already have a nonprofit affordable housing property tax abatement and people supported that. Um, it is re-upped each year. And so the support here is for continuing to, to do that and to renew it annually. Um, on the development code and permitting side of things, incentives for space-efficient housing, so that is a, that is a set of smaller units that may be more affordable. Sometimes depending on definition, it also can include accessory dwelling units. Um, reduced parking requirements for affordable housing or housing near high-capacity transit. Okay, it's at the top of the list because many people put a blue or a green dot on it, but I have to say, this one also had the most red dots of any other, uh, uh, tool. So guess what? Surprise, parking is a polarizing issue. I, I bet you didn't know that before tonight. Um, even among the task force, it was the most, nobody was neutral on parking. Uh, everyone felt strongly about it. But the reason to think about reducing parking requirements is that parking is expensive to build and can take up a fair amount of space on a parcel. So we're limiting the amount, reducing the amount that's required for affordable units can make it more affordable to build the units and can also make it so that you can put more units on a, on a parcel. Uh, and this is specifically and only for affordable units. And then implementation of House Bill 2001, which is the missing middle housing legislation that passed in this most recent legislative session that makes it, um, impossible for you all to have single-family exclusive zoning. Uh, it's nice to know that you have the support from the task force for something that you have to do. Uh, outreach and coordination, um, the things that came to the top here were increasing outreach to nonprofit affordable housing developers. The obvious reason to do that is to make sure that those, the strength of those partnerships encourages and incents your nonprofit housing community to be working here in Wilsonville. Uh, and then the second one is better connections to Clackamas County's housing bond implementation. And this is related to the Metro bond that was passed, uh, by voters in November of last year, um, and that is being implemented through Clackamas County and making sure that Wilsonville is connected into that process that the county is running to make sure that some of those dollars land here in the city. And then requirements, um, the, the, none, none of these ones came to the top in terms of having lots of green or red dots. They were all sort of in the middle, hence those funny gray arrows that are pointing at the middle of the spectrum. Um, I will just point out that inclusionary zoning, uh, not only had sort of what I would characterize as tepid number of dots associated with it, it also had a fair number of red dots, um, that were assigned to that one. Inclusionary zoning is a policy that the city of Wilsonville is allowed to implement only so long as it matches a certain set, a sort of state, a state-enabled box. And it, it means that if you've got a building that has at least 20 units in it, you may make a percent, you may require the developer to make a portion of them affordable. That's what inclusionary zoning means, through your zoning code. Um, and then some other ideas, some new ideas came up as well. Uh, tenant counseling and advocacy, uh, focus on mobile home parks, um, and vest SDC rates at time of complete land use application, um, which I'm honestly not sure I understand exactly what that particular idea means.
So that would be, um, typically, uh, a builder becomes vested in their SDCs at the time of a building permit application, which oftentimes is, you know, six months to a year after having an approved, um, subdivision plan, something that goes through the public hearing process. So I think that idea specifically says that when you have a complete land use application, that is the point at which...
Oh, for credits.
For, for the rate that you pay.
Got it, got it, got it.
In case it goes up.
Yep, okay. Um, and then ongoing coordination with schools came up as an important piece of implementing the program to, because the schools are a place where there's a lot of connection into communities. Um, so that's, that is the summary of the feedback from the task force. Um, so again, just to emphasize, it was largely focused on the building-oriented tools. Um, and the, the number one, uh, idea that came to the top was permit fees for SDCs, um, and then focusing on the property redevelopment at SMART and then a sort of smattering of other ideas. Parking actually rated pretty highly and pretty lowly.
And I'd just like to clarify as well that the, um, the SMART West redevelopment idea is that there is some city-owned land there that is not currently being used as a part of the actual transit facility. So the idea would be utilizing land that is currently vacant for some kind of affordable housing, workforce housing-type units at that location so that it's transit-oriented. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't involve tearing down anything necessarily, but just, um, including that into that development.
So our overall goal with this project is to identify a subset of those tools that the city can move forward with in the near term. And in some cases, it might just mean begin a conversation or explore further, um, but in some cases, it might mean actually move forward with an adoption, adopting a program or funding a program. Um, and to get there, we would love to have your feedback on which of these building-focused tools seem to have the most nexus with the challenges that you all are seeing in Wilsonville with the feedback that you've heard in the presentation so far tonight, um, and that you'd like to have us continue to explore. Um, and so we'd like to ask you to do the same exercise that we asked the task force to do, uh, with a set of dots that Kim has here and a board that we have up here. But before we do that, any observations or questions about the task force? Or the specific tools?
Well, I have a, a general one. If I were looking only at the report that, that we had, this, um, equitable housing or the, um, uh, housing needs analysis, uh, I would conclude, hopefully wrongly, that we were being urged to transform in some fundamental way, uh, the nature of Wilsonville, the character of Wilsonville. But what I'm hearing tonight is definitely not that. Uh, what I'm hearing tonight is quite reassuringly that we want to preserve the character of Wilsonville and, uh, mitigate those weaknesses that certainly do exist so that we are doing a better job of what we've wanted to do all along. Uh, am I right about that? Uh, when we come at the end of this 20-year, 20-year, um, period, Wilsonville's character should be essentially, uh, like it is today, only better. But, uh, the values that Wilsonville has embraced and which has, Wilsonville has affirmed in its regular, uh, survey, uh, high approval of Wilsonville's, um, uh, what shall we say? Sense of itself. Um, we, we want to maintain that. And it would be very easy if, since we're already well along in, in achieving these, um, distribution, uh, goals that Metro has and that, and that the state encourages or even requires, uh, for us to, um, to feel smug. We don't wanna feel smug, uh, because we're not perfect. We're far from perfect. Um, on the other hand, we don't want to, uh, risk, um, tipping, uh, what we have, uh, so successful. Uh, and I think that we could actually, without even knowing it, we could be near a tipping point. And if we did, uh, accidentally change the makeup of Wilsonville in an important way, especially, uh, moving it toward a lower-income, um, social and economic basis, uh, that we could tip the, the, the balance and end up with, um, a much less vibrant and, uh, socially mobile community than we have today. Um, so I, I like what you're saying about, uh, continuity. All of the, the, the sense of continuity is very important. Uh, and we should be in this task force activity and, and, and commission here. And when this council gets around to actually the strategic plan, the focus of the strategic plan should be, uh, a, as the purpose stated, identifying gaps, things that we can do better and ways to do those better. Uh, ways to support the, uh, the under, uh, or less well-served parts of our community and, uh, to make ourselves better, simply to make ourselves better, but not different in essential ways, in the ways that have been so successful and that the, that the community is so proud of. Uh, I just, I strongly feel that this is possible and that it's necessary to keep that in mind. We don't want to change Wilsonville, we want to improve it, we want Wilsonville to grow, we want it to remain SMART in its growth.
I think the point of this project is quite simply to figure out what kinds of actions the city can take now to help the people who live here now who most need it, uh, as it relates to access to housing that is equitable. Um, and that, that's consistent with what you've said.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, I think it's the, um, the continued reference in the report, uh, to the 20, to the 20-year horizon and where we will be at the end of 20 years, that is, that, that is a possible source of alarm.
Yeah, and, and to just be clear, the, the document that you're referencing is the Housing Needs Analysis.
Yes.
Which is not the market report that is informing this process. The Housing Needs Analysis was happening contemporaneously. Its purpose is really part of the larger Oregon land use planning system to look at land supply and demand. What we're talking about here tonight is really much more oriented toward actions that the city can be taking in the near ti, near term to address needs on the ground.
So from a simply public relations, uh, standpoint, I think it would be very good for that to be very clearly, uh, stated so that the people reading these reports will understand that difference.
Okay.
The other issue that that brings up is that the city, uh, council has, uh, approved Wilsonville being an inclusive city. And if Grandma can't afford to live in Wilsonville anymore and we tell her to leave, then it's not inclusive, in my book anyway. So that's another way of, uh, of providing a context for this, that, uh, if we are indeed trying to become better by maintaining our inclusive spirit, then the market, as it changes, will force us to do something that we may not have done before, because otherwise we wouldn't be inclusive.
Awesome. All right, let's spend some dots.
So, um, we're gonna give you three dots. The task force got six, but we're, we're hoping to make this a little more of an abbreviated, abbreviated version of the exercise. So you will each get three, which means easiest to implement in your view. Um, the blue, three blue, which is most effective. And I will note that you do not need to use all of your dots if you do not choose to. You can also use a green dot and a blue dot together if you wish. Um, and then red, which means you would like to see it removed from the list and removed from consideration. Um, so we'll give you, we're just gonna do them all on the board here, so there might be more dots than space, that's fine, just as long as we can tell that the dot relates to the idea, that is good for us. Anything else?
Just many task force members did not use all of their red dots. Uh, in, in particular, it was hard to say what not to do. So for what that's worth, you also have that ability. Good.
Blue is effective. Most effective. And green is? Uh, green is...
And I would just ask the commissioners not to have a discussion about the, the selections you're making while you're doing it, since we are still in a public meeting. So after you guys are all done, if you wanna have a discussion about the, the reason that you put dots in certain space, that's the time to do it.
Thank you for that. We would, we would very much like for you to explain why you put the dots where you did after you are done doing so. Yeah, try to remember.
Seemed reluctant.
Don't be afraid.
Remind us the green and blue again?
Green, green is easiest, blue is most effective. And they might be the same. A tool might be both easy and effective. That seems like a winner to me. And you can put them all on one if you want. Have at it. Don't be shy.
Easiest for the city to do, right?
Correct. Yeah, these are things the city will do. There you go, it's happening.
Dang it. Somebody's gonna break the ice. Now it looks like I'm just following.
We're gonna do it. And don't, you can ask questions unless your attorney says not to.
Should we turn on the three-minute clock?
Put on that.
Yeah, exactly.
I said you were ready.
I know. I didn't say I was ready to make the decision, I was just ready to start.
Got it, yeah, okay. Yeah, I can answer questions too.
Yeah, it's just, these are, I think the... I'm keeping quiet.
Well, I mean, if they're on the microphone at their desk, they can talk, right?
Yeah, and if there's a question that you have, if you wanna say it into the microphone and then we can answer it up here for the good of everybody.
Yeah.
Or if you have a question out there, we can repeat it for you here.
Yeah.
I had the opinion to say that was really well-provided to say until they lagged.
Got it, good, yeah.
Okay.
Well done.
Sometimes.
Now we had dots here. Yeah. Okay, all right. On the tax abatements, they're really all kind of different flavors of the same thing. It doesn't, the specifics don't matter that much. Because it's only for nonprofit homeowners. And that's the one you already have.
So the question was, um, the distinction between nonprofit and, um, low income, and it's technically two different programs, and that's why they're both listed independently.
They, they each have independent authorizing legislation from the state and their own name, but they kind of have very...
I wasn't looking at the one below.
Yeah, yeah. They're just different flavors. It does, the, the flavor doesn't matter so much, just do you want the ice cream?
I got you. I got you. Now I understand why you separated them. Thank you.
Can I put a blue sticky across the middle of two that seem very similar? Or just going to confuse things?
I can confuse things, although...
For example, the property tax abatement.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, so Laura Lai, do you want to repeat what you said about the different tax abatements to give some clarity? Simon was asking if you could put them between two?
Yeah, I think the reality is that to determine which of those you would want to move forward with, we would have to do more analysis anyway. So if you feel like a tax abatement is a good idea, then you should go ahead and put a dot up there next to the tax abatements. The difference that's meaningful is that the vertical housing tax abatement is only for mixed-use market rate development. The rest of them can be used for affordable or market rate. Well, no, sorry. The top two are for market rate, the bottom three are for affordable. Yeah.
I'm working on reds now.
We're doing it.
I have some patterns there. I thought you were people.
Don't give me no reds.
I'm questioning if they live in...
I should have only given them two dots.
Sherbert, I mean? Oh, Sherbert. Somewhere else. They do? They're way ahead of us.
We're not going to discuss it. We're just talking about their dots. This is for units that are...
Oh, no. Party foul.
Faster.
Party foul.
Say. All these years. It's different things here.
Is that your first one?
You know, I have called you with these things.
Like, three months ago, I did it in court and went all the direction opposing council's paperwork. And he gave me this look like, "Did you do that on purpose?" No, I'm a clot.
Looks like we're pretty close to wrapping up here.
Yep.
All right, so we'll let everybody get back to their seats, and then I'll turn it over to Laura Lai to maybe make a few initial observations. Then any questions or comments that the group has, based on the observations, I think this is really what we want to hear your feedback on, or your reason for choosing certain policies or not choosing policies.
And questions that you would have about them. I would say, sort of similar to the task force feedback, that there was interest in many different areas, but it's pretty clear that the systems development charge and the smart property redevelopment came to the top in this activity, in the same way that it did in the task force activity. I'm interested in the two red dots on the implementation of House Bill 2001. Pretty sure you can't not do that, so...
That was unpopular.
As unpopular as it may be. And I will also point out that the parking requirements also, just like with the task force, both green and blue dots and red dots in equal proportion. Seems to be not much interest in the ownership or sale requirements, but it also occurs to me that might be an area where it would be helpful to provide a little more definition of what those mean, to help to inform the conversation a bit more. But those are just some high-level observations. How about if we turn it over to you all to tell us why you chose what you did or did not choose, and maybe some insight into where you would have additional questions or hope you would see this go from here?
And I would point out, just as the next step, I know it's premature, we have a slide for next steps after this, but our next step is to go to city council and report back to them on the prioritization of the strategies. So this information will be directly taken to them for their discussion and prioritization.
And the city council report will also include the online survey?
Yeah, well, that'll be wrapped up by then, too, so we'll have information on that as well.
When does council have this on their agenda?
As of now, it is scheduled for October 21st for a work session. So we just need to confirm that with our consulting team.
We look at it again in December?
Tentatively, that's what's on the schedule now. If anything, it's possible that could fall back by a month. We've got to just see what feedback we get and go from there.
Am I the only one that wishes they had a letter on their sticker so they remembered where they put them? Yeah. I will say one thing, since it keeps coming up with regard to the Smart West property redevelopment, I put a blue there because I think it's the most effective, because it goes back to what I was saying before, which is, I think that is, I think that would be the most effective way to create a program in this city for something of a larger-scale type of development that could utilize some sort of subsidy programs. But I say it with caution, simply because I worry about how we implement it. I do worry about cities getting too involved in the development, and I think that can be a recipe for, and I know, not to be too harsh on government here, but inefficient construction and management. So, I mean, I think good use of that property for that purpose is important, but it comes with that caveat, in my mind.
Are you also cool on the idea of land banking?
No, I think I had that, I might have put a sticker there.
I asked you how you were going to pay for that.
You asked me how to pay for it.
Yeah, you didn't ask me.
All the rest of these have a cost, too. It's not like they're all free.
I guess I'll jump in on one that I put a red on, because I remember it. So the, on the expedited fast-track planning and building permit review, I put that as a red primarily because of my concern with maintaining the city's character. You know, we have a robust planning process for a reason, and it has allowed us to have the city that we have now. And by providing a vehicle to shortcut that, we provide an opportunity to get what could be considered a substandard product. And if that was maybe worded differently or more narrowly focused somehow, and I'm not sure how, that's why I'm saying it, it would be something I would be more willing to consider. But the way it's written right now, it just, it feels like there's an opportunity for us to lose some of what we have that makes us special.
I didn't tag that, but I had in mind a different model. I thought it might refer to something like form-based code, which was an expedited process.
That's what I was thinking, what I put a blue by it.
That's what I was thinking, too.
Okay.
Yeah, it could, and it could be. It could be implemented in that way. And in the next phases of trying to clarify and get this organized, that would be one of the things we would want to explore if this one moves forward.
Again, all of these decisions, absent a quantitative kind of scope of impact for a tool, makes it very difficult to make that decision. If expediting the planning process cuts the cost of a housing unit by half, would you agree that it's worthwhile, maybe, in certain cases?
Depends on the impact.
Yeah, there we go.
If it were combined with a process like form-based code with, which guarantees a baseline of quality, so you have a backstop. But if it only shaves off a tenth of a percent of the cost, well, maybe it's not worth it, then.
So I ran out of red dots, so I'm going to, on the record, indicate another one that I would have given a red dot.
I was going to give mine to you.
City-led landlord counseling, I don't think that government entities should be in the business of picking sides between landlords and tenants.
How about mediation?
There's organizations that do it, and we should not be in the business of it. The reality of it is, is that I've represented, sorry, is my microphone on? Sorry, I've represented a lot of property managers, and I mean, I just have to say that if, sometimes the tenants have real struggles, sometimes the tenants are in a position where their struggles are not taking into the account the difficulties of being a landlord and the realities of living around other people. And so by the city or other governmental entities being in the business of counseling, we're picking sides, and I don't think that's a fair thing to do to our landlords and property owners.
To clarify, does that include funding other nonprofits that would do the work of mediation or counseling?
Again, I just don't think we should be doing it. Those organizations exist, and they can find funding in other ways. I don't know why government should be in the business of picking sides between landlords and tenants.
Well, that's an interesting question. This is, I am assuming, not an affordability issue, it's an equity issue, right? You are trying to even the power balance between landlord and tenant.
It's an anti-displacement strategy, right? So as market rents are increasing faster and faster, and tenants are impacted by that, and may be forced to move to make sure that they understand what their rights are in the face of that changing market dynamic. One thing that is different about Wilsonville, and Kim mentioned this, is that most of your rental stock is newer. So the kinds of issues that tenants are facing here are different than they are in other places, where they're dealing with toxic mold and falling down roofs, and they need support to be able to talk with their tenants about, or their landlords, about having safe living conditions. That's much less of an issue here. Here, it's really more about an anti-displacement strategy.
Do we have any figures, or do you have any figures for the number of units that are protected?
Yeah, we did have that information. I don't know it off the top of my head, but I'm pretty sure it's included in the market report.
And by protected, you mean subsidized units?
No, no, the rent control.
Oh, well, we have, all units in Wilsonville would be equally, yeah, under the statewide rent.
Is there a 15-year?
No, all of them are subject to rent control now.
Well, it's, he is right that there's a time, a time limit on that, and I do believe it is 15 years. Any unit that is older than 15 years is subject to rent control, and anything newer is not. Don't quote me on the 15 years, I need to double-check that, but I'm almost positive that's right.
Basically, since you look at the map with the dates on the, the rough dates on multifamily units in Wilsonville, since 2000, you can, that, but there's a, I'd like to know how many units there are within that 2000 to 2004, 2005, whatever the date would be, that are not covered, or that are, no, sorry, that are covered in that rent control measure.
Yeah, we do, we do have trend information about when units were constructed, and we're both flipping through, trying to find it, but it is included in here.
It's on page 11.
Of...
So we'd have to do some math to get there. We have the data and could give you that answer.
So, I mean, after 2000 is grouped into one category, so...
So how many units were built between 2000 and 2005?
Yeah, it's, on this map, it's going to be all of them that are not the darkest orange that would be subject to the statewide rent control.
And then some. We could probably figure out which ones are 2005 before.
Those are the largest developments, apartment developments in Wilsonville.
Okay, other...
The primary one I think of that's probably in that larger apartment complex is probably the first phase of the Villebois apartments, that were built by Tramal Crowe in that period. Off the top of my head, I can't think of other large projects that were built in that five-year span.
So the opposite, or the adverse of that is how many units are not protected?
Quite a lot.
Quite a lot. I mean, you have all of those, Drury Trail, and all those along Parkway there, as well as some additional in Villebois.
Be useful to me to have those two numbers.
Okay.
So on the, on the subject of the West property redevelopment, I think we talked about this when the smart master plan came in, and that's, I think, when I first saw this. I think, I was not a red dot, I was a green dot, I think, on this. The, I think that we have to think about the zoning and the area and the connectivity and the, I mean, we talk about transit-oriented development, but the transit there is commuter rail, and then I guess it's at the center of the bus network, so it's really the bus network is the transit that we're looking for there. And so, which is designed to take people to employers around the city. So if it's employment, if it's employee housing, it'll probably be suited really well. But what I'm also thinking about is the location is maybe a bit challenging, because it's kind of in an industrial area. I mean, I think it's zoned industrial. It is, you could walk to Villebois or from Villebois to that area across the bridge, but it's not, itself, it's not in a residential area. And we kind of, that area needs a little bit of rethinking as to what we're doing with it as a city in that particular area. The other thing that always comes to mind is that bridge that we're talking about building across the I-5.
Which will connect that to our town center.
To the town center, right. So maybe with the town center redevelopment, there's opportunity there to make this a little continuation of the trail that we've talked about in town center, in that area, right to the transit center. But it's just, right now, that's not a very attractive part of town, and I think we need to think about doing something somehow to improve it. I just don't know what, and how, and how that would come about.
We have an opportunity to do one thing with the bridge landing on the west side.
Yeah.
A factoid that we would do well to keep in mind when we're talking about parking is that 80% of Wilsonville's workers who drive to work drive alone, and that's a large number of drivers, one per car. They have to put their car someplace. And I don't, and it doesn't seem reasonable to assume that lower-income are going to be less likely to drive to their work. I don't see how, it's an inconvenient fact, I think, that Wilsonville has to deal with, that we have so many commuters here who are dependent on their cars, and they have to be provided for.
I mean, is that, is that something that's going to continue 15, 10, 15 years down the road, or is things going to change with short-term rentals, Uber and self-driving cars and whatnot?
Yeah.
I mean, because what we build now is still going to be here in 20 years down the road, and all those parking lots may not be necessary. Are they? I don't know.
But they can... But they can be built on.
They can be built on, that's true. Like in the town center, in, in the town center, we, 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 we planned essentially building on what today is, is parking lots.
I, I would like to think that, uh, there's a way out of our car dependency with automated vehicles and pods and so forth, but I, I really think that that's, uh, false, yeah, it's a false expectation. In my, certainly in my lifetime, but it may not be that long. But certainly, it's, it's not within the 20-year horizon going to transform Wilsonville's streets. I ju, I just don't see that. Doesn't happen that fast.
I think what, what would be helpful for us as we start moving into the next phase of identifying actions would be maybe to walk through some of those that had the most number of dots and hear from you all what questions or concerns you would have if they did end up in the plan. Because at this point now, we've asked this question of a couple of different groups of folks, and the few things are coming up to the top in both conversations. So it's the SDCs, the WES, um, land acquisition, land banking is kind of an interesting one. So if you don't, if you don't mind, if we sort of step through these and just let, let us know, let's pretend this is in the strategy. What kinds of questions would you hope that the strategy would address, or how far would you like it to go? And maybe start with the, um, reduced or waived permit fees or systems development charges for affordable housing. There are many communities who have programs like this across the state, and affordable housing developers quite like them because it reduces their upfront costs and makes it easier for them to figure out how to finance the housing that they're developing. So what are, what are your thoughts, questions? Would you have concerns about having that in there? It's a good one.
Well, I'm much more sanguine about doing that for low-income homeowners than I am for Cabela's.
Okay, gotcha. Luckily, we're not talking about affordable housing for Cabela's tonight. Okay, so that seems, that seems like a, you, you have a comment?
How much of a difference does it make in Wilsonville?
Uh, it can make a, it can make a big difference.
I know it can, but what are the numbers for Wilsonville? What kind of percentage per unit is, uh...
Okay.
Because of this, these fees?
Okay.
Now, the other aspect of that is, I'm assuming that if we are going to get into, um, having affordable units, that these are going to be dispersed. Because otherwise, I can see a scenario where you have all of them in one area, and so all of the services that were expected to be paying, uh, to be paid for by development in that trunk or whatever are getting waived. So, uh, the idea would be that, uh, you have a mix of development so that it is divvying up the difference on other higher-priced developments.
Yeah, I, I put a blue dot on there because I thought that it was something that the city could easily do. To me, the devil's in the details and, and how that would be implemented and, and whether or not, with those details, whether I would still be in favor of, of that implementation measure.
Yeah, what, what does it take to qualify to get the SDC waiver being an important detail?
Yeah, percentage of, yeah, as Commissioner Mezba indicated, you know, how many of them do we allow? At what point are we oversaturated and not actually being able to afford the infrastructure improvements we need that the SDCs are paying for?
Okay.
So one of the, um, cells that I, uh, supported was land acquisition and land banking.
Yeah, let's talk about that one.
Kind of in that same category. Most people who are not familiar with the history of development and planning don't remember a time when the only development you could have was the development that the cities and villages did, and then they sold those, those buildings. Uh, we have since moved to a market approach. Uh, the downside of the market approach is that it only supplies what the top pay is from the market. In some cases, the most effective solution to affordable housing is for the city to bank and buy the land and sit on it until they can get into a public-private, uh, kind of collaboration with developers to build on it. And that would also mean that those lands are developed, the, the, the systems are, are put in at the city's cost. So these are developed acreage, or improved acreage, I should say, that are then built upon by, by developers in a public-private partnership.
Others have thoughts about that one? I'm, uh, personally a fan of this particular one. If you have the money, you have to have some cash to be able to acquire the land, but for exactly the reasons that you described, it allows you to be able to act countercyclically. You can buy at a point and then hold and build at a later date when it makes more sense from a market perspective to be able to do that. And when you control the land, you can control what gets built on it and when it's built. Most local governments don't do this on their own because most local governments, um, they may not have the money and they may not have the patience that's required to hold land. But there are nonprofit entities that function like land banks and, um, the, frankly, a community land trust model is a land banking model in a certain sense. So the question here for you all would really be a, a money. Well, first of all, are there other properties besides the WES property that you already control and own that you could think about using strategically for affordable housing? And/or as a bang for the buck, does it seem like something that you would want to figure out how to fund? Whether in partnership with another entity or not?
I see it as an effective approach, which is why I put a blue dot by it. I, I still have my skepticism with it, but I will kind of go back and answer Commissioner Mezba's question about the SDCs because I kind of see those two together. I, I think you're inevitably gonna have to look at a few of these things together. And I think when I looked at, you know, how much ta, how much savings do you really get from some SDC forgiveness or waiver? It has to be in conjunction with other things, in my opinion, such as tax abatement programs and the like. Um, I, I think that's probably the only way it works, because I think you're right. If you're gonna have a multi-unit project and, um, and you're saving some SDCs, it's, it's a small percentage. But if you can couple that with tax incentives and the like, um, you can probably get there.
Well, and, and that's the other aspect of, of the, I left my red dots right here. I did that at the task force as well. Because in my experience, exactly what, uh, Commissioner Postman said, becomes the strategic combination of these things. Inclusionary zoning is a prime example of a tool that can be very effective, but it's not a silver bullet, it needs to be a part of a bigger, uh, set of tools. So to me, putting a red dot on, on something puts it out of consideration prematurely at this point. It may be a necessary 1% that will pencil in a, uh, a development that would otherwise not. So, uh, that's why I was reluctant in, in disqualifying any of the tools.
Okay, maybe just a final focus of the inquiry on the tax abatement programs. And this is a place where it may have been helpful to have had a little bit of discussion ahead of time. Clearly, if you just look at tax abatements as a category, this is something that, that you all put a lot of blue dots on. Uh, and that's consistent with the task force as well. Tax abatements in general were something that seemed to make sense. There are many different kinds of tax abatements. There are those that are designed to support the development of housing, market-rate housing, and those that are designed to support affordable housing. But they both function very similarly in the development pro forma by reducing ongoing costs of operating the building once it's constructed. And both can be very effective in advancing a housing strategy. So comments, questions, thoughts about tax abatements? You already have a nonprofit, a, a tax abatement that's targeted specifically at nonprofit affordable housing developers. It's renewed annually. Presumably, based on the number of dots here, it would continue to be renewed annually. Any interest in looking at, uh, other kinds of tax abatements? And if so, why? And what additional questions would you need to have answered?
I, I have, I have some experience in seeing private developers, um, not for, they're not nonprofits who have used tax abatement programs successfully. Um, in fact, that's where most of my experience lies. And I think it's short-sighted to say that we should be providing that incentive to, um, nonprofits and not for-profits. Yeah, sure. Um, I, I, I honestly believe that if we opened it up for-profits and did some of these other things, you're gonna have people sniffing around the city in order to do that. Um, I think, um, you know, the fact that we don't have some of those SDC waivers and the like, or, or tax abatement available to them means they're just not looking here. And, and if we open that up, I think they will.
The question that raises, though, is at some point, as I was, as we were starting about who's gonna pay for this, taxpayers are paying for this.
Sure.
All of these deferrals of payment of this, that, and the other thing goes to the rest of the taxpayers. At some point, somebody is gonna start saying, "I don't like how much tax is being put on my property." And so the, the, the why that I heard there was, you really want to send taxpayer property tax money to profit in order to, to make possible and affordable housing? Uh, and the question is how much, how much? Again, it goes into the details.
Sure.
Devil is in the details.
And the federal programs, for instance, have some pretty severe and, and long-running restrictions as to how long you miss, make those units available as, as affordable units and the like. And, um, your tax, uh, your tax abatement can both go away if you don't meet certain requirements, and it certainly sunsets at some point in time as well. So, you know, you can get there, you can, you can create a structure whereby, um, it, it, don't get me wrong. I, I call them for-profit entities, you know, they ain't eking out much of a profit, they're just not nonprofits. They're people who have, um, they're just efficient at doing this, um, and so they can make it work. And, and I, I just hate to see us foreclosing out that possibility. And, and you're right, I understand that sensitivity, which is, why are my tax dollars going to make for tax abatements for some guy who's making a profit by renting units out? But it, it's not much of a profit, it's got sunset, there's a whole bunch of regulations, you can do it right.
The transparency in that, I think, will go a long way.
Sure.
To, uh, create an environment of trust, uh, amongst the rest of the taxpayers. Because I don't want this to become California, and you know, you have Measure 13, all of a sudden, you know, all the schools start going out of business and stuff like that. But that can very easily happen when there's excesses.
Sure.
In, in this kind of a thing. So the, uh, in, in all of these things, I think a measure of cost-effectiveness, if you wish, would be helpful. You know, okay, this person is not a nonprofit that's doing this, but we have statistics that says they're basically operating the same way as a nonprofit is doing. Uh, so they are, they are on par. Uh, so we can have performance-oriented, uh, kind of standards for, for this so that it's transparent.
And if you're coupling it with federal programs, it's, it's, some of that is already there.
Just one of the things that always, I mean, we, we talk a lot in, uh, about new buildings, but what about existing buildings and making, or housing and making, uh, you know? And, and I, I think when we talk about like tax abatements or things like that, that we, we need to make sure that it includes keeping existing housing affordable and, you know, some programs that look at that component in it and not, you know, we, we get so focused on new stuff coming in that we forget that, you know, there are, there is like a mobile, a couple of mobile home parks, and we've seen what happened when we yanked out one of those. I mean, it displaced a lot of people that were on fixed incomes. So I think, you know, in, in all these strategies, we can't forget that which already exists and, and the tax abatement and, and some of these other strategies really also need to focus on that. I guess just, you know, a lot, certainly on, um, the anti-displacement and renter support things, you know? It's already been said that, you know, there are certain things that, that maybe are not appropriate for the government to get involved with, and, and I, I, I have to agree with that. I mean, there are, there are organizations that, that is their charter, that is their, their mission, and it, it's really not appropriate for the city government to get into, into the, some of those areas.
In the case of Thunderbird, the city government did, and it was very necessary.
Yeah.
And effective.
And effective, but it was kind of after the fact, so...
But it led to the development of a low-income facility for those displaced residents.
It did.
Okay, anything else?
I, I wouldn't want to rule out, um, renter support and anti-displacement efforts completely from the city, but I, I mean, I, I get that there's limits as to what we can do as a city. May, maybe it needs to be, maybe it's best done through supporting nonprofits or, or other organizations that can deal most effectively with, with these complex issues. And I don't know, yeah, if, I, I get the point about picking sides, but, um, the, the sides don't, aren't really equal in my, in my, in my view, right?
Oh, I, I don't agree with that. I mean, we've actually put out a lot of legislation that has tipped the scale the other direction. So, um, you know, that's, that's what government should be doing. And, you know, they're nonprofits for a reason. If, if, you know, individuals feel it's necessary to support a nonprofit in that effort, they can and should. I don't know why tax dollars need to be used for that. Because again, we're picking sides between landlords and tenants in that scenario, and, and I, that's... That doesn't seem fair to me.
Are you open to referral program?
Sure, keep a, keep a list of phone numbers around, that's, that's fine, but, um...
Is that what you were talking about, Simon? You know, that the city isn't involved, but there is information available, referral or whatever?
Well, yes, and I think, I'm, I'm still hoping for something more, but I'm not sure what. I'd like to look at ways of exploring, um, dealing with displacement. I mean, the, the, the people that are having to leave town because they're being priced out of their apartments, and what can we practically do? And I, I still don't, haven't got a handle on that. So, I don't know.
So these do homeless programs for people who are being evicted and...
Yeah.
And provide support so that they can get back into units and those kinds of things as well.
Yeah.
I don't know where you are in the spectrum.
All over the place.
I also note that there were no dots next to grants, loans for new development and preservation, which is a way that you can directly address that by acquiring or investing in existing buildings that need renovation in exchange for maintaining affordability within them. And I'm, I'm guessing that there were no dots there because of concerns about funding availability, but that is a pretty important tool that could be used to address exactly the kinds of issues that the commissioner is raising.
You only gave us three of each dot.
Okay. Well, that, okay, so that means don't take it off, but don't take it to the top.
Which, which one are we saying that there wasn't any dots on?
The very first one under A, grant loans for development and preservation.
Oh, there it is, yeah, okay, I gotta squint.
Was it hidden underneath there? You didn't notice it at the top?
Yeah, I don't think I understood it.
And on, um, House Bill, on the 2000, yeah, the, the Oregon House Bill, are, are these, any of these strategies, are they in alignment with that? I mean, do we know that, or...
No, I mean, they're not, they're certainly not in opposition to it in any way, but it's just tackling the housing question from a little bit different angle. House Bill 2001 is a zoning question. Okay.
So this business of, of cities not always being able to afford, whether it's buying land or buying units that need preservation and so forth. Typically, where it's successful, cities start accumulating funds at a trickle so that when recession happens or there's a lot of foreclosures, they start picking these up cheap. So it's not like you're buying them at the top of the market rate. The whole idea is to buy cheap and, and fix up and then maintain for affordable housing. And I think that is a long-range program. It's not going to be something you do in the next five years, but it would be a strategy for the city to, to look at as part of its growing pains almost.
Yeah.
At an early point in my career, I was a family service caseworker in Multnomah County. And at that time, the county had a program, I don't know whether it still exists, of acquiring properties around the city, all through, all across the city as they became available. Simply acquiring them, in effect, land banking them, and then making them available as subsidized housing to my clients. I had a number of clients in such housing. That was a very nice thing, but required Multnomah County's deep pockets to pull that off. I can't see Wilsonville actually being able to do anything significant in that respect without pretty substantial financial reserves.
This is one place where increasing connection with Clackamas County as it implements Metro's bond could be very helpful. And that wasn't on this list of tools because it's not, it's not something you can control that's specifically about building units. It's more people-oriented because it's a Clackamas County program. But there's $500 million here in the region as a result of the voters passing that bond available to acquire land and to construct new units and to preserve units. And that's going to be flowing through Clackamas County. So paying attention to that could provide, it could, it could jumpstart something that could become a longer-term program.
Especially if you have some seed money to match their funds with.
Right. Or if the city had the land and then the bond money provided the construction of the units so that you are matching.
Any more input you would like from us?
I think, I think we've got what we need unless there's anything else you want to tell us. Don't talk about parking, got it?
Okay, then I guess.
Thank you. Yeah, so I believe I touched on this briefly, but we'll be back before you next time with a draft strategic plan document. In the intervening months, I think, you know, certainly when we have survey results, that's something we would want to share with you. So we'll probably have that published somewhere on our website. We can let you know where that will live and what we find out. Beyond that, like I said, back to City Council for our work session. So I would encourage you to just follow what's going on there. And I would also encourage you to visit the Let's Talk Wilsonville website and see, in addition to the survey, if you haven't taken it yourself, there's also a stories function where we're prompting people, why did you choose Wilsonville as your home? And we've, we've gotten an interesting range of stories on there. And I think we're at at least 10 or so now. So as you have time, I would encourage you to take a look.
The, the task force has one more end of the year.
Yes, so once we have a draft plan document, we will go back to the task force. And that will happen before we come back to the planning commission for our work session.
It's on our agenda, middle of December.
Yes, as of now. And like I said, depending on what we hear from the City Council and the amount of legwork we need to do between that point and getting a draft plan, that could be subject to change by maybe a month or so. But we will keep you posted.
Good.
When I add a point about parking, most of the conversation that we have on these issues are universal, general. At the talk that, I don't know if Kim, you were at the talk in San Francisco at the Partners of Smart Growth on the impact of parking requirements on the cost of affordable housing. The lady who was talking was showing a, a success story.
I do remember this.
And that housing was affordable housing for seniors who did, for the most part, not have cars or drove. They had visitors and there was enough parking for that. But what the standard was that each unit had to have two parking spaces and so forth was absolutely unnecessary. So there are categories of, of housing where not requiring parking could make perfect sense. I think, you know, some of the issues that I heard had to do with just globally not requiring housing just because, parking just because something is affordable housing. But you can even, you know, you can get more targeted than that, and it may work very well. So I wouldn't, you know, shy away from talking about parking in those specific cases where these issues are not, are not germane.
We, we have some, some work to do to figure out how to frame all of this up. But my hunch is that there will be a category of tools where there's mixed interest or specific questions that need to be addressed before the city can move forward. And that we'll want to document that and say, here's, you know, here's these tools that feel like there's some there, there, but need more definition. And that parking may end up in that category, which is to say, there's something to be done about it in the near term, but it's not, we're going to just bulldoze straight into adopting a plan. We're going to think about, think about what it will look like. That's just a guess. I'm looking to see how many grimaces there are, as I'm saying that, to try to see if it's a bad guess or a good one.
I mean, parking is very emotional. And so providing discreet examples, as Commissioner Mezba identified of, here's areas where it could work, is the, I think, I believe, the only way where you're really going to get any agreement or consensus from the community as to something that they can get behind.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
And appreciate your attention.
I don't see any time allocated to discussion of the housing needs analysis. Have we done that?
Just for information, Kim, did you have anything that you wanted to summarize on that?
Sure. So we made a couple of references in the market research report to the county-wide housing needs analysis. And that is a project that was undertaken by the county. They started it almost a year ago, not quite, to look at essentially doing their required housing needs analysis for unincorporated parts of the county. But my understanding is there was an interest, particularly among the C4, that they wanted to, to look at some of the communities and actually invite communities that might want some more detailed work done as a part of that process to be involved. So Wilsonville has been involved. And one of the items in there, which is actually Appendix A to our market research report, is a baseline housing needs analysis for Wilsonville. And this builds on work that had been done back in 2014 when we had a larger housing needs analysis done for the city. This really just serves to provide some updated information, some updated projections. So that's where we're kind of getting into that 20-year look ahead. So that part is included as Appendix A. We also, for the information item, included the first three chapters of the report for the county-wide document. They haven't yet posted the final document on the website. It's only recently wrapped up. I know I was actually at the C4 meeting last week where they, they were talking a little bit about how they want to disseminate that information on a larger level among the various communities. So I believe later in the year, in December, they're going to talk about how they might create a presentation that can be given to City Council. So I don't know quite at what point that will be provided as its own link on the website. I can provide, if you're interested, a full link to the document that was included in the C4 packet last week. It's like a 500-page packet, so it's quite beefy. But it has a lot of appendices. There's the first three, three chapters we included just because we thought you might find some of the information in there interesting. There is some demographic information for the county as a whole and a bunch of comparisons among different cities in the county that are in the appendices. So I think as a follow-up, we can send out that link once we have more information on where it lives permanently and, you know, how we might communicate that further among the city. We can let you know. But in the meantime, we thought it'd be something you'd be interested in looking through. Generally speaking, from what the analysis showed for Wilsonville, with our recent UGB expansion efforts and thinking about how we're going to grow in the next 20 or so years, it noted that we do have an adequate supply to accommodate that future growth. I think, as we all know, we tend to grow larger than Metro's forecasts assume. That's been historically documented. So I think it is something that, from a city perspective, we'll want to keep an eye on as we start tracking new development that comes in at Frog Pond and see how quickly we're going through that land supply. So I'm happy to attempt to answer any questions you have on that document or follow up with any of the project consultants. Eagle Northwest also worked on that. So Laura Lai might have some information, but she was not the project manager on that particular aspect.
I actually know very, despite the fact that my firm worked on it, I know very little about the specifics of the housing needs analysis, but I do know who to call. So if you have specific questions, I'm happy to take them.
Well, again, as they go out into the public, I think it's important to keep that distinct from our specific document here, what we're working on here. Otherwise, we invite alarm. Anything else? You have the City Council minutes for two meetings in August. And not last week's. We have a new city councilor.
Indeed.
And who is that for one of the people that was occupied last week?
Pardon?
Who is the new councilor?
It's Joanne Linville, who's currently the chair of DRB panel.
Yeah, okay, great.
Or was currently, as of Monday was her last DRB meeting, so.
Okay, then we have our work schedule, and we still have space in it.
No, the urban forestry plan is going to take, you know, four hours, informational session. No, yeah, we have space in November, I think.
We have space in December.
Yeah, they'll find some way to fill it. We'll have this again in December, so.
And potentially.
See, it takes plenty of time.
I thought this was scheduled for December.
It is.
It is, it's on there. So you have residential.
You're looking at last month's.
Last month's work projection.
Yes, so right now in December, you have residential code and equitable housing. So, yeah, it's.
Thus, we're going to spend the whole session on the urban forestry plan.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah. I think there might be, that's fine, that's going to be a quiet one. So in, in relation to the urban forestry plan and seeing that we've got so much time in November to talk about it, I remember there was that tree survey that the students did a year ago, whenever that was. Is that, is that feeding into that? Or is that something completely different?
No, I mean, that, the data we have, which, because, I mean, the data that they picked up on all those trees the interns did got put into the city's asset mapping software. So we have that data now.
Okay. But the, one of the things that we talked about at that time was how that might affect our code in the future. Like, you know, there were obviously places where the wrong tree is in the wrong place or certain, you know, is, is that, is that kind of feeding back in through?
What results come from the urban forestry plan? I don't think we're at that point to make a determination that an action will be to make a drastic change to the tree ordinance at that point. But different programs and such are, are still a possibility.
Do you have space in November?
Yeah.
I, I will say that the city recently contracted with Friends of Trees for a street tree program.
Awesome.
And I would also add, I can, I can request, if you're interested, since we talked about, in connection with our open space discussion, since that project is being led by Kerry Rappold, to talk more about kind of the city's SROZ regulations, the history of those. If, if the commission is interested on the background of that and kind of the status of those regulations, we could ask Mr. Rappold to include that as an informational item as well.
Where are we with the residential code modernization project?
So we'll do another work session on that next month, really talking about setbacks and lot coverage and whether those are regulated by zone or by lot size, essentially, among some related items. And then the rest of October, November is now with some direction from the planning commission. Go back and take that to the development community and other interested parties and get that feedback. And then in December, come back for a final work session to, to respond for the commission to any of the feedback we got. The feedback we get through that outreach, as well as any other questions, kind of tie everything up. And then moving into a, like the public hearing, the beginning of 2020. So that's our current work plan on that, on that item.
Good.
Daniel, anything that we can do with that, especially when we're getting into the details and specifics, pictures and examples, will be greatly appreciated.
Understood.
Thanks.
The, so I have a question about Frog Pond East and South and the UGB application. I don't, didn't quite understand the status of that. It was, it was mentioned, I think, in the housing needs or something about that there's, it wasn't included in the housing needs analysis in terms of, you know, the future growth and stuff. But what is the status of Frog Pond East, South?
So July, it was approved by the, the Land Conservation Development Commission. I understand, right, that there's still ongoing legal proceedings post that. But, but once that's finalized, it'd be in the work program. We're still finalized and win, but it's not immediate to really look at, look at that.
When it, when it is, we'll be launching into master planning?
Yes, because previously, we just adopted the concept plan. The master plan adoption was only for Frog Pond West, so there'll need to be a full master planning process for East and South.
And we'll revisit some of the issues that got parked there.
Correct.
But I also heard that mentioned in connection with House Bill 2001. Was that, was that correct? Is that when we're going to start to address or implement House Bill 2001 or when?
There likely be separate projects because of certain timeframes driven by the legislature, the legislation. We're still, because we're examining where there may be some, with the different timelines and potential funding and stuff, where there may be some efficiencies in combining some of that work. But some of it may have to be separate as well.
Okay. Anything else? Then we are adjourned, oh. Adjourned at 8:27.